We'll call the meeting to order and have roll call, please.
Dyke.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Crispy.
Yes.
Maycumber.
Here.
Wintering.
Here.
Item two is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections?
There are. We've got five additional consent agenda items. So on A, approval of personnel, resignations. We have Rusty Rogatzky from eighth grade girls basketball, Robert Hebert from custodian. And on B, appointments, we have Barb Bullion and Teresa Van Hoween for summer food service workers, and Kim Nishel kindergarten teacher.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented with additions.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda with the additions forementioned. Roll call vote, please.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yep.
Crispy?
Yes.
Maycumber?
Yes.
Dyke.
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda item three is to welcome the visitors and allow public comment. As we begin our agenda tonight, I'll explain our process for public input and comment. The board will hear comments from the public in conjunction with each agenda item using a structured process. As board president, I will ask for comments when we reach that item on the agenda. You will be asked to approach the microphone, state your name, and limit your comments to two minutes. At this time, I invite any member of the audience to step up to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern that do not appear on tonight's agenda. Please begin by stating your name and contact information. It would be appreciated if you would limit your comments to two minutes so that we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion and allow others an opportunity to speak, as well as allowing the board to complete the full board agenda in a timely manner. Comments from the public are limited to matters within the board's authority. Please understand that we, as a board, cannot discuss items not already on the agenda. Iowa sunshine law prohibits us from having a discussion without the proper notice to all of the school district community that the issue would be discussed at tonight's board meeting. Also, please remember, you are making comments in a public meeting. Should you make comments that the subject of the comments considers to be inflammatory or libelous, you, as an individual, may be subject to legal action brought by the subject of your comments. We thank you for your support of our school district. Are there any comments from the Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item four, which is comments by board members and superintendent, and we'll start with Dr. Cox.
Thank you. The Des Moines Register published its annual academic all-state selections yesterday, and one of our seniors made the top-ten list. Congratulations to Brooklyn Op, who was one of Iowa's best and brightest. Lieutenant Governor Kim Reynolds visited Charles City last Friday as part of her statewide STEM tour. She got to interact with elementary, middle school, and high school students, and they showcased 16 different STEM-related activities taking place across the district. And then I was also able to give her about a 20-minute tour of the new middle school, and she had nothing but praise for all of the innovative work taking place here in Charles City. And finally, we have two big events coming up this weekend. The spring play is Friday and Saturday at 7:30 PM in the auditorium. Tickets are $5 for adults, $3 for students, and the Charles City Excellence and Education Foundation banquet also will be taking place on Saturday at the Elks at 5:30 PM. Tickets are on sale at central office.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments by board members? Was able to attend the Friday afternoon STEM reception with the lieutenant governor on behalf of the board, and a nice turnout. The students, of course, did an excellent job, and we want to thank everyone for assisting with the endeavors that afternoon with the lieutenant governor coming up for that visit. Move on to agenda item five, public input on cost reductions, and we'll turn it over to Dr. Cox first.
All right. Thank you. So before you tonight is the final recommendation for your consideration. The first section is action that already has been taken, and that totals $329,009. That would be items one through eight. Items nine through 13B, I'll read the recommended reductions. Number nine is to accept the resignation of the middle school activities director at $5,840. Ten is to have our educational secretaries work 194 days plus the six holidays for savings of $2,519. Eleven is to accept the resignation of Bob Hirders custodian. That's coming up tonight, $45,459. Twelve is to offer girls swimming as a shared sport with Mason City, $2,764. Thirteen A is to operate the middle school pool, October 15th to March 1st, through privately raised funds and user fees. That's a savings of $13,307. And thirteen B is to keep the pool drained from March 1 to October 15 at $10,0571, for an additional savings of $80,460, bringing the total proposed savings to $409,469. The remaining items 14 to 22, I'm recommending be removed from consideration for this year's budget reductions.
So we'll open it up to public comment at this time. If anyone has anything they'd like to say about the current list and recommendations for reductions, you may approach the microphone, and we would ask that you, again, keep your comments to a two-minute timeframe.
I'm Brandy Lance from Charles City. Just wanted to update you guys. Friday, I decided to try to begin to fund the pool, and we've already received almost $9,000 of pledges. So it is something that the community does want.
Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, we will move on to agenda item six, which is the board discussion and action on the cost reductions. Are there any comments from the board?
I just wanted to make a comment. Thank you, Dr. Cox, for your continued efforts with working with Lance and doing the extra work to help figure out the pool and what it would cost to privately fund that, breaking that down for the community. Thank you very much. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's a win-win, and I feel good about us, our ability to reach into unspent balance to save about $100,000 worth of jobs for folks. And that's probably the most unpleasant part of any of these budget cuts, but to be able to save folks' jobs, that's very good.
And thanks to Terry, too, for her efforts in figuring it out with using some of our unspent balance and the amount of work it does take to figure that all out so that we are, keep our district where we need to be for our future.
I agree that it's the most painful process. I don't, you know, having, if you haven't gone through it or had to make these kinds of decisions, no matter what business you run or own or whatever, it's when you talk about laying people off or people's positions, and to have to so publicly talk about their positions at just plain stakes. You know, we've got a lot of really great employees. We looked at our general fund budget, 84, 5 percent, you know, salaries and benefits. When we're looking at $500,000 of cuts, you know, it's, I'm thankful that we're creative enough to be able to have as little impact on people's jobs as possible. But that being said, we're still eliminating a section of first grade. We're still eliminating some positions that anytime we do that, we lose a level of service to our students. So it's disappointing that we have to do that, but I'm thankful that we're having as little impact on our staff as possible.
So the board can approach this a couple of different ways when you're ready to make a motion. We have the recommendation to go one through 13B, which totals $409,469. You could approve the entire list as presented. You could ask that something be taken off for individual consideration. Remember, if we don't approve something here, we need to find something down the line later.
Is there a motion?
Ready for a motion if we're done with discussion.
Make a motion to approve the 2016-17 budget reductions totaling $409,469 as recommended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the cost reduction list as presented by the superintendent. Any other board discussion? Any comments from the public?
I just wanted to, oh, okay. I just wanted to thank everybody for their hard work. I know it's not fun, and thanks to the governor and the government, their goshers, the situation. So I know it's a lot of work. I do know that. I had a brother get 13 years, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Crispy?
Yes.
Maycumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Dyke.
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda item seven, the instructional support levy. We have the abstract of votes that everything has officially passed, and we now need to adopt a resolution to continue participating in that.
Motion to adopt a resolution to continue participation in the instructional support program as approved by the voters of the school district.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution to continue participation in the instructional support program as approved by the voters of the district. Any further discussion by the board? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Crispy?
Yes.
Maycumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Dyke.
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda item eight, the early childhood center presentation by Kara Shannon, Washington Elementary Principal.
Well, about a year ago, we were here with changes, but they were due to a lack of the Shared Visions grant. We didn't get this last year. So we're here today to change or propose some changes for our program, but on good terms. And really, the two reasons why we're here tonight, or I'm here, I guess, is to really look at increasing the number of students that we have participate and then increasing the number of hours that they can participate. And so if you look in your board packet, there's a little bit more detail, and I'll just kind of give you a summary of that. The first way we're looking at doing that is increasing our partnership with Head Start. Currently, Head Start has two classrooms in the TLC building, and they would like to have one Head Start at Washington. There's some need for allowing their students to have a longer day as well, and it also allows them to meet one of their targets of having students or serving a certain population of students with disabilities. And so we kind of have a win-win situation here. So what we are proposing is that from 8 to 11, those students would be part of our statewide voluntary preschool program, so 20 students, but they would also meet the Head Start guidelines. So then, from 8 to 11, our preschool teacher would meet with them and have their preschool from 8 to 11. And then, from 11 to 3, the Head Start would provide the teacher then, yet to be determined, but would provide the teacher then from 11 to 3. So the students would get breakfast, the lunch, the snacks, the rest, everything that's required is part of all of our programs. We have the same curriculum, same assessments. Everything is really nicely aligned. Another benefit is that we would have our early childhood staff also participate in some of the professional learning that Head Start already does and has lined up, which is a growth area for our district anyways, to have a little bit more personalized professional learning for those early childhood teachers. So that's a huge benefit. Those families, then, are not having to pick up midday. Hopefully, they can pick up, and it's aligned with, you know, other students that are already K5 or K12. So that's one of the partnerships that we're looking, another nice thing is that they are going, they're willing to furnish the entire classroom. They're closing a classroom somewhere else. They will bring everything over and furnish that. So that's a huge benefit for us. So then, we can use what we already currently have in that classroom for what I'm going to talk about next, for our extended day. So the second part I talked about was increasing the number of hours that we want students to be here. We did a survey of our families that had recently registered for preschool, and a lot of them would like to see that all-day program happen here at Washington. And some of it has to do with daycare costs. Some of it just has to do with, we just want somewhere for them to be in the afternoon because we don't have a daycare. We want more social interaction. You know, we want a more schedule, routine, structured thing. So we want to honor that. We still want kind of a formal education, but we also want a little less. So we're going to call that the extended day. So that's what you see on your forms here. So, for example, if a parent wants their child to go to preschool in the morning from 8 to 11, we'd still do three hours, 8 to 11, then they can stay, have lunch, have a rest time, have outdoor learning, and have still some structured learning in the afternoon from 11 to 3. So they would be here an entire day, 8 to 11, or 8 to 3, so they could take a rest in the afternoon. So maybe on the flip side, then, if you're a parent that has a child that maybe doesn't get going as quickly in the morning, and they still have to be there, though, at 8, you know, maybe they'd have breakfast, and they could have maybe a rest or playtime more in the morning, and then, so from 8 to 12, and then 12 to 3 would be the extended day. So you kind of see that on your sheet there as like session one. So session one, 8 to 11 preschool, 11 to 3 extended day. Session two would be 8 to 12 extended day, 12 to 3 preschool. So, and then the other session I put on there, that isn't a change. We have a special education session that serves three-year-olds and four-year-olds. For those of you that don't know, a unique thing about students in Iowa that have IEPs, once they're on the early access and have an IEP, once they turn three, they can come into our public school setting and receive education there. So we don't always know when that's going to come. It's not like a normal August, you know, start date. If they turn three in February, they can start in February. So we kind of always have to keep that in mind when we set our number of our students and how many slots we allow. So another piece is that we're hoping to increase the number of students. By doing this, this will allow us to increase to about 13 to 15 more students. It's giving us a few more, still not where we want to be with our vision for the future, but it's definitely getting us in the right direction. Questions or things I can answer about that? I should talk about the extended day. The extended day would be a cost to families. So the statewide preschool would stay at tuition-free. The extended day would be a cost. So if you're there for four hours a day, it would be every day for you, and it would be $150 a month. So if you take into consideration what, four hours every day, times a week, over a month, that's considerably less amount. And then, we do have some of our students with IEPs that are there from 8 to 1, and they could participate in the extended day from 1 to 3, so they would have half the amount at $75 per month then.
And so can parents pay that online, then, Kara?
We haven't worked out that detail yet. Yep. A lot of details, but not that one.
Yeah.
Is our preschool program every day, too?
We are changing that as well. Yes. Changing it to every day, so Monday through Friday. Yep. Last year, we really, when we came with our program changes, we really had to fit a little bit more of what met our family needs, but more what met our budget. And this year, we're going to be able to really expand on that. So Monday through Friday and 8 to 3 is what we're hoping.
So any student that enrolls in our voluntary preschool program now will be five days a week?
Yes.
With the extension?
With, yes.
Of extended days.
Yep. That's what we're proposing to change.
As a parent of a four-year-old, a student of a four-year-old, I'm excited.
I'm excited about it, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we know some families, obviously, you know, if they have the benefit of being at home with their child, and they want them there, they certainly aren't, probably not going to participate in this unless they want them to have more social interactions. You know, it's totally up to them. It's not a one-size-fits-all by any means, but it definitely is an option that a lot of our families in this community particularly need. And we're excited about having them there all day, too.
I think it'll really make the transition to kindergarten or whatever the next year roll out easier as well, so.
Right, right. We know that transportation was on this survey as well when we called parents, and we know it is a huge need. We understand that, and Jerry Mitchell and Sam Gassen and Dr. Cox and I have been in conversations about that need. We just, we have some things to think about, and obviously, the safety of our students is number one. Right now, under the statewide grant, you have to walk your child into the preschool and meet the teacher. And so I have a little reservations on if your child could just walk to a bus, you know, stop and not be met. So I would want to, we'd have some discussions around that, and really, just are we going to have enough drivers, and what time would they be picked up, and at the same time. So we've got some details, and I just don't, can't say for sure if that's going to work out for this next year or not, but we know it's a need out there for our families, and we're listening to you. We just baby steps.
It's exciting.
It is exciting how this program is developing.
Yep. Another piece I should add to, I forgot to talk about, is that we will have to go through DHS licensing, which for a school is not really too hard because we meet a lot of requirements anyways. And our Wise Guys program has already done that at Washington already, so a lot of those things are in place. But because of that, then, the families that would participate in the extended day, if they are receiving or could receive childcare assistance, they could use that then to help pay for that $150 a month, yep, or the $75 a month. So it could be completely tuition-free. Yep, they can apply that through DHS.
Because we have parents that have already signed up, so now...
Hold on.
Sorry.
Not in public comment. Anything else from the board? Any comments from the public on this topic?
Nancy, please. I think you're going to find that you're going to have...
You have to identify yourself.
I'm Nancy Simon.
Thank you.
And you're going to find that you'll have great consistency because the more kids you get into preschool here, they're ready to go into your public system. New Hampton's been doing this for some time, so I'm really excited that you're going to do this. And parents have already signed up, so then, unfortunately, they'll hold it down and they'll decide what they're going to do, because some of these kids have already signed up for other preschools, which they'll have to change. Right. But the more kids we can serve, the better it's going to be. So it's very exciting for me. And they do, in New Hampton, kids do ride the bus. The associates take them out first to the buses before the other kids. So they are taken actually to the bus.
Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy. Sounds exciting. We'll look forward to see how it all works out this fall, and keep up the good work.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Agenda item nine, the middle school addition change order. We have a number of them here listed.
Well, I was thrown for a loop just last week. We had Buildings and Grounds talk about this. You know, at the last meeting, we talked a lot about the contingency being exhausted and different things. So I was kind of, when I saw these come up, I thought, holy smokes, where's this money coming from? Well, what Scott had explained with us was that budget that we had gotten or seen the last time around, all of these were factored into that. There was a line item in there that essentially had taken the contingency, put it in that line item, didn't call it that anymore, but these were anticipated, things that they've been working on for a while that just now came up. Explanation on them, you know, the big ticket, the big dollar ones, number 36, the added infrastructure, that was one that like, that they had anticipated as they went along the process of identifying what the security features were going to be, how many cameras, how many lockdown features, things like that. That number continued to evolve. This just catches up with that process. And 54, 55 were things that we had some discussion on. The media practice room walls, that was, as explained to us, an error in the drawings and overlooked in the construction drawings when they did that, the architects, omission, I believe is the term used.
Yeah, by the architects.
They had looked at ways and talked about ways of rectifying it and, you know, whether it was cheaper or not, but what was found is that the dedicated use of these spaces relied heavily on the soundproofness of them, and this was really the only way to make sure that they can maintain the integrity of that soundproofness. So that rectifies that soundproof, that omission in the original drawings. So, but it doesn't, it's a big number. It doesn't put us over budget by any means. It continues to keep us in budget with the contingency. And then, I think I had the other budget piece that there was estimated to be, we talked about the contract allowances. So there's specific allowances within each contract that, in my mind, I equate to being a contingency. That balance, they still estimate to be $125,000. So there's a number of things that can still, as we continue on, there may be opportunities still that if that balance is unused, that we can put it towards other features or additions or whatever. Even though it's a big number in change orders, they were anticipated within the budget.
What a motion?
No.
Yep.
Okay, I move to approve middle school addition change orders 36, 42, 43, 44, 50, 52, 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, 59, totaling $68,752.55 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Agenda item nine has been moved and seconded as presented. Any other discussion by the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Maycumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Crispy?
Yes.
Dyke.
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda item 10, the mid-year superintendent evaluation.
April 25th is the spring check-in on the Iowa Individual Administrator Professional Development Plan. So I printed one off again real fast for you to take a look at. Briefly go through the three goal areas. The first one, the strategic plan. Administrative team is going to meet tomorrow morning, and we're going to work on our focus group answers at that time. Got some additional focus group meetings that need to be scheduled over the next several weeks. Keep in mind that the city and the YMCA also are in the midst of developing strategic plans, and given the potential for partnerships with either or both of those organizations, it has complicated the process. It's both good and challenging that we're all in the same work at the same time. So we'll do my best to have something for you in June. I would also put out there that you may decide when we get to June with the initial one that, all right, that's a good skeleton, but maybe you want to have a professional person come in and just conduct one for the district like they did many years ago and have that. That'll be something for you to consider when we get to the summertime. Goal two, the STEM best. This is the most developed of the three goal areas. Heard we had the lieutenant governor here Friday, just an outstanding event. The work is really coming along with our four-school partnership. We feel good about where we're at for the fall. We expect to enroll. My latest number is about 50 students from across our consortium, so somewhere in that 15 to 20 here, approximately 15 at Osage. New Hampton is looking probably in that same 15 range in Rockford. We're hoping to maybe get about... In Rockford, we're hoping to maybe get about ten. We'll see. It, it's hard with three bigger schools and one that's a little bit on the smaller side. But we want to preserve the four that we have. We think this is a really strong partnership within our three-county area. And so we're feeling good about this. We will be presenting in June at a statewide conference as one of the five STEM Best Award recipients. And so we'll share kind of the journey that we've walked with people who are considering applying at the end of the summer for sixteen, seventeen school year. And then, the third goal area was increasing student engagement. We lost both of our full days of professional learning in February and April due to snow days. So that has hampered some of that work. I will share that at the elementary, we continue to make good progress with our lab classrooms. And that actually has led to a desire to expand up to the middle school, at least in math, with that lab classroom work that we had going on. So that was a positive result of that work. At the middle school and the high school, continuation of the project-based learning initiative that we have going on. So a lot of good things. And that, that would be a quick summation of where things stand right now in those three goal areas. Remind you that in June, you're going to be looking at this in addition to the six Iowa Standards for School Leaders as part of that summative evaluation. We'll do that when we close session.
With bringing the schools together, we should talk about the number of students per district. Does, do you anticipate, is that something that they're going to remain on their remote campuses just coordination with the programming? Or is it?
Both.
Both.
So we anticipate initially, and we had designed this to be kind of a twofold thing, that part of it would be remain at your own home campus, get involved and collaborate using technology, and have our teachers be collaborating as well. And start to blur the lines of I'm green versus orange versus red versus blue. So some of it initially will just be, I'm at my home high school, and I'm collaborating through technology means with kids at other districts. Or I may just be collaborating within my own homeschool district based on my passion areas and what projects I'd like to be involved with. We're going to do at least one walkie-type program. And that's meant to be more come here than it is to stay at your home place. So kids from the other three districts will have the opportunity to come here, not necessarily every day, but it might be two days a week out of the five. And then, the other three days, you're engaged in work back at your home high school. So we're sort of forging into a territory that no one else is at. And that's the exciting part, that we can create something new to offer up as another model so that as more schools across the state are exploring, what do we want to do? They have a good example in suburban Des Moines, a good one in Cedar Rapids, and then another one up here in a rural setting.
Is there targeted grade levels for that?
It's targeted, nine-twelve is what our grant is written to be open to. It's probably more targeted eleven-twelve initially as we get it launched and then let it kind of settle into a nine-twelve setting.
Do we have a maximum number of students?
No, not yet. That'd be a good problem to have.
I'm excited about that work. I mean, as we look forward to the things and the examples you've brought to us with the walkie and the Iowa Big and the other things. The more rural Iowa, to be able to move towards something like that is, is exciting. You see it in the big cities, you know, why can't we have that here?
Exactly.
If we can be creative enough to, to do it, so.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a bonus for all of North Iowa. And, you know, I look forward to seeing how this really grows in the next year. And, you know, once again, you know, we have had a very busy year full of all kinds of goals. And, and, you know, you're leading the way in the state, you know, not only in building a new middle school the way we've designed it, but now the way we're teaching, too.
Well, in 2013, you said we want a destination school district. And we're trying to put all those pieces together. How do we create something really unique and special up here? And keep it all manageable. But we think this will be a neat opportunity for students.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anything else from the Board? Thank you. Definitely looks like we're on our way for all three of those goals to become successful.
I hope so.
Agenda Item Eleven is the Consent Agenda as added to. Are there, we have a motion?
Motion to approve Consent Agenda as corrected.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda as we added to at the beginning of the agenda tonight. Roll call vote, please.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Grisby?
Yes.
May Cumber?